It's time to call the meeting to order.
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming this evening. We appreciate having you here and invite you to make comments on the agenda as they appear and also make comments on things that are not on the agenda. Tonight is item number three, citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. That being said, Sandra, would you call or vote please?
Councilperson Brinney?
Here.
Brinney, here.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Thank you. Item number two is consent of agenda. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the April 9th, 2012 council meeting. And C, receipts and disbursements. Is there any discussion or are there any questions around A, B, or C?
Make the motion to call. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve item number two, A, B, and C. Sandra, would you call for a vote please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Brinney?
Thank you. Item number three, a citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Are there any in the evening? If not, we'll move on to item number four miscellaneous. A is a community foundation to present their annual report. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Please come forward and tell us all the good things you've been doing.
Well, we have.
I know.
I'll give you just a little background information on what you... I didn't pay attention to what else was going on.
Do you think we're going to be down?
Uh, yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, every year, the council requests a report from the foundation. And, uh, I would, I guess I lift off and they said, "Okay, you're up." But, uh, I've been on the foundation ever since it began. Uh, and it has grown, not nearly as fast as we would like. And I know that there are other foundations around and everybody's asking for money. But our, our hope was that citizens who had business in town, who made a, a fine living, would make a contribution to the foundation to help the town. And our, uh, receiving monies, and it can be stocks, bonds, cash, almost anything, uh, can be restricted or non-restricted. Restricted. I'll give you $5,000, but it all goes to the library. Fine, that's the way to go. I give you $5,000 and as long as you keep it in the city and all the things that you're doing, they don't care. So, we have, and you'll see that on the second page, the list of restricted and non-restricted funds. Uh, the primary donor to this was Paul and Vivian McCorkle. And they gave $100,000. And it was to do the maintenance and the upkeep of Kids World. Paul being a builder, he knew that once a building was built, it isn't just done. There's a lot of maintenance. And when you have that many kids in a building, there's a lot of maintenance. So, the money is to be used for maintenance, whether it be a new water heater, a new roof, or whatever. We are allowed to use 5% of the profits or the excess of $100,000 every year. And even at that, you can see that the $100,000 has grown to $120,000. Uh, we have the unrestricted, the second one in, uh, the line there, various donors, several of us, have made contributions to the foundation, uh, $100 a month, uh, whatever. And the money was given, is it the way you see it? Uh, unrestricted Schuer family. Uh, that was primarily cash, $10,000. We have used that somewhat and it's down to $3,500. Uh, we gave, somebody gave $100 to the cemetery fence project and that's where it's, that's where it stayed. Uh, $3,150 North Fifth Street, uh, was given. Nothing's been done on the North Fifth Street to the point where we feel like we can give the money yet, so it stays the same. Uh, the Harold and Virgie Buckham Fund. Those of you who have lived around here for a while knew Virgie Buckham and she worked in the hospital for years and years and years. And when she passed away, and, uh, go back one step farther. Virgie's daughter married, uh...
Ingrid.
George Pindries. So, they have a very keen interest in the, the hospital. And primarily, that's where they would want it. Even though, uh, it has been used a little bit on the outside, it's still restricted to hospital things. Uh, SAC Aquatic Center Funds. Everything that was left over after the fundraiser for the swimming pool, they didn't know what to do with it. So, they gave it to us with the idea, and it's strictly restricted, that it will only be used for things for the swimming pool. We, uh, $14,000 was given. It's down to $11.5, I think, maybe, I'm blanking, or something. I don't remember now, but it, it had to be for the swimming pool. Uh, Simon Estes, uh, hm, he, uh, we've got $1,250 left in restricted and we gave up $4,083 because of the money that was collected. Again, they didn't know what to do with it, so they gave it to us as a path through. Uh, the Schult Funds. Uh, $30,000 is in the Greater Des Moines Community Fund. And if you, some of you remember that a few years ago, you could give a donation to a tax-exempt organization and you could get direct, uh, refund or credit toward your state taxes. If you gave $10,000, you could get $10,000 in credits on your taxes. And it stays in the Greater Des Moines Fund. You get the, you get the interest off of it. And so, that's where that is. Uh, $16,000 and the $1,630 are, uh, additions from the Schults. And this is, uh, God, how can I say his name?
Doug Charge.
No, not George. Doug.
Doug, Doug.
Doug Charge. He's the one that has given all this, and his brother, uh, they've given this and they're very generous, very generous. And we have $2,259 of income cash, which is $1,706 that still is left. So, uh, of all the money that we spent, we still have, uh, real close to the $200,000 at which we try to, try to maintain. Uh, as you can see, the Old School Reunion, Stockton Building, Kids World, Goring Hospital, Partners Progress, Simon Estes are just a few of the things that we have made contributions to. And the first page is basically who we are and we meet once a month right here in these And, uh, we just go over what we've got and see if there's anything that we can do for somebody. So, I'll try to answer questions if there are any. Um, I've been on the, the board since the beginning, so, but if my memory works at all, I might be able to help you out.
You know, just one thing further we might add. There, there is an application form, there's certain criteria that you have to meet in order to apply for it, but anyone that has a, you know, good project, you know, you might approach the, the foundation.
Right.
And, and an application as well, and it would have to be filled out.
It, it's been restricted to nonprofit. Yeah. And, uh, if the project seems to be worthwhile, if they have, uh, some backing to match this or not necessarily match, just go with it, we probably will do it. Anybody? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your report.
Yes, you did. Glad to do it. Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Coach. You, you're right in time to watch your brother.
Okay, we'll move on. Item four B is consideration of setting pool wages and rates for the 2012 pool year. And you have a copy of those in print. So, um, if there are questions or discussions around the 2012 Aquatic Center season payroll.
I guess the only comment I have is kind of off the payroll issue, but we're all aware of how the school starts earlier and earlier and earlier. And I received some comments from some people with children in that district here that, uh, we would like to purchase season classes, but the school just keeps starting and starting earlier and earlier and then we start shutting down. And it's something that we can really do about, you know, the city. But it does cut down on some income that the city receives because of the start dates and waivers that the state is issuing, and that is it. And, uh, you know, I just want to let you know that I've heard some comments from people on the small children that it is an issue.
Do we have kids that are, are going to be lifeguards this year and that they don't all go away? So, most of the time, it's been a problem because the kids that were lifeguards went back to college and it left us without enough to run the pool. Uh, would we have enough that would still be here to open after school?
It would be hard to tell at this point. I mean, for instance, last year, we thought we would be okay last year. And until you get around that time, you really learn to, if they decide they want to go to, back to college a week early, they go back to college a week early. It's, uh, something you kind of falls into your lap. We start gauging it sometime in late July and start figuring out how long we can stay open, um, through the season with the amount of guards we have. Of course, there's a minimum amount of guards that require for you to even be open at some point. Um, the other thing I would say, Nick, uh, and it kind of goes along with your point, it's not really about your point, but it goes along with your point. Two years ago, we increased the rates at the pool and we felt that it might have been detrimental to our numbers at the pool. So, last year, we adjusted our rates back down to where they had previously been in an attempt to kind of, we felt like we might have been pushing ourselves a little bit out of the market cost, so we went, we reverted back to our old rates last year. And these don't reflect a change.
It was just a comment that I was...
What percentage of these guards are college kids? Ninety? Would you say ninety?
I would have to go back and look.
There's five that are in high school.
You can assume that the fours and sixes on there would all be college-age kids.
Five are in high school, I can, I'm thinking, I'm thinking...
Only four of the regular guards are going to be back in high school. And then one of the students, student, student is getting issued, no. And then one of the students, okay. Four guards are going to be back.
You have all five. You might not be able to write all the slides, you know, that you could have.
Didn't Shirley say something at the last meeting that there's a...
The state's been toying around with the start date for schools. Uh, in the past, they've always been granting waivers to the schools to start before the deadline in the, that's set by the state. And it's pretty much been a rubber stamp process. There's, uh, seems to be a new push in both directions. There seems to be one group pushing to, um, to eliminate, um, the deadline and then there also seems to be another group that wants to make it a hard deadline. So...
Tourism.
Or make it more difficult.
Yeah, to improve the tourism.
Right, because school starts and the tourism shuts down completely and it's, money, a lot of money.
Areas like Okoboji, for instance, are very...
State position.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. What was it? Okoboji said that for every, uh, for every week, they're closed. They were talking about a couple of million dollars that they're losing a week every, that they start schooling.
And I know for the last several weeks, they stayed open to the week before school starts, but they've always had stipulation that they're going to open weekends after Labor Day. Well, trying to do that, either high school kids aren't even willing to. When school starts?
Oh, oh, I cannot believe that.
Football practice.
They're not. They don't take one of the... The idea was always there, and that, you know. But then also in the same respect, if you've ever been to the pool, the last week or two it's open. The attendance is, you know, kids have been swimming for two months and the attendance is...
Something else we've monitored every year has been our closing time. And, you know, we've toyed around with that. It's been as early as seven, it's been as late as nine before. Um, we really just monitor how many people are using the pool in that timeframe to try to decide when it's financially feasible for us to be open or not open.
Any other comments or questions?
I realize I got off the beat after, but I just wanted to jump back here.
Are you ready to, do you need a motion to okay this?
Yes.
Are you ready to do that, Council?
I will make the motion to go with the pool wages and the pool rates that is coming in.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the pool wages, the pool hours, the admission prices, um, and the concession workers. Would you call for a vote, Sandy?
Councilperson Proheart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Working here.
Thank you. Item four C is consideration of approving specifications and going out for bids on a city tractor. There's information in your packet about that. Did you have any questions around that or Adam, would you want to speak to it?
Sure. Uh, one of the things that we need to do to fully evaluate our options is to put out for a bid for what a used or new tractor, either in a lease or a purchase arrangement, would cost us. Well, of course, once we have these numbers, compare them against the cost of either renting or contracting out for the same services. Uh, so all of that is factored into this and this is simply the first step, so we'll expect to put those numbers together.
So, Adam needs a motion to allow him to go out for bids for the tractor.
I'll make the motion to go out for the bids for the city tractor.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to go out for bids for a city tractor. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Brinney?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Working here.
Item four D is update on Water System Improvement Project. Adam, would you like to update us?
Certainly. There are two things I particularly wanted to say to the council tonight. One of them is on April 26th, which is this Thursday, at 6:30 PM, myself, the Public Works Director and the Water Superintendent will be hosting a public information meeting here in this room to answer any questions that those being affected by our water project have that evening. Uh, so, um, I just am informing you of that so you're aware. We've been sending them letters that talks about the process and this was just the next progression is giving them an opportunity to meet with us. They've had, we've had a couple come in and ask us one-on-one questions, but this gives them an opportunity to hear what other people in the group have questions about as well. I know I've received a little feedback from a couple of people who plan on attending that live in that area. Um, the second thing was a bit of good news. Uh, we originally believed that the temporary water system would place all of these property owners on a boil area. Well, we updated our plan and presented that to DNR and they believe based on our, our new plan, there was, that the drain, the water will be drinkable. There will not be a need to provide alternative drinking water during the, uh, the temporary water service period. So, that is a definite win for us in this process and will save us some time and some procedure, um, that goes along with it.
And the Water Department is picking up the tab for this, is that correct?
Yes, it'd be coming out of water distribution.
Any other questions, Councilor?
They might fight with us over a fire hydrant or two, but that's about, about the limit of it.
What has been the feedback from the people on that?
Um, to those that have had a problem with their service, um, they are happy and they seem to be, um, more than ecstatic at the possibilities. To those who have not had a problem in this area, um, there've been some that have questioned whether or not it was the right step for us to take. They thought it might be, uh, that there might be some alternative options and of course, um, this option was designed particularly for the purposes of, um, I mean, once you slip line this line and you've seen the process of slipping this line, there's nothing for the material to attach to after that point. So, uh, you're talking about an area where it could be a problem that could continue to fester and grow to a scenario where you completely eliminated it as a possibility as long as that lining is...
Okay, thank you for the information. Okay, we'll move on to four E, consideration of hiring summer laborers. And there was also information in your packet about that. Do you have any discussion around that? As we discussed a little bit at the last council meeting.
We'd make the recommendation that, uh, we offer the position, a position to Jacob Page for the month, starting, um, as early as on or after April 30th at a rate of $9 an hour for a two-month period of time.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I so voted to hire part-time laborer Jacob Page, starting April through June. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to hire Jacob Cage, the temporary summer employee. Um, are there any questions or... Otherwise, Sandy, would you call for a vote?
Councilperson Brinney?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Working here.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity here, were we looking, have we hired only one before or have we gotten two before or...
Uh, you actually gave us permission to hire two.
Yeah.
Um, at this time, we're recommending one.
Okay. Item four, um, F is discussion of planning and zoning comprehensive plan update.
The, um, I, for the most part, I just wanted to remind you on April 30th, which is a week from tonight, at 6:30 in this room, um, the, um, Panlighting and Zoning Commission will be hosting the two finalists that they are interviewing for, um, for the, uh, service of updating the plan. They have asked council members that are interested in attending, um, to attend that evening. If you are interested in attending, please let me know, because if there's enough of you attending, I might at least have to post a work session to the City Council to have you in attendance that night if a quorum is planned on being there.
When is that again, Adam?
That's a week from tonight at 6:30 in this, in this room at AP and Z meeting.
Okay. Uh, four G is consideration of resolution number 2012-03 entitled a resolution setting campground fees for Riverside Park. And I know that the Park Commission talked about this at great length. And the reason being is that during the winter time, if camp, the campers stay, the city gets a hit for electricity that is just huge.
Yeah, we, uh, we had some campers that wanted to stay later in the season last year and, uh, they ended up using electricity to heat their campers and, uh, it wasn't penciling out for us for that time period. So, we went to the, uh, we went back to the, um, drawing board as far as the way our resolution read and I presented to them a handful of different options on how they could respond to this type of issue. Uh, before you tonight is their recommendation, which is that, um, as of October 1st through April 14th, that we only provide camping with no services. That we do not provide services during that. We do not guarantee services or available during that period of time. That way, regardless of whether or not the weather is good or bad, or not in a situation where we have a commitment to provide those services during that period of time.
Electricity.
Electricity. And of course, you can also make the argument of, uh, in a long winter that falls into mid, mid-April, um, water service as well could be a concern. If we have an early winter or a late winter and you could have frozen pipes if you turn the water back on, so we don't want to be committed to providing that service in a time period.
How about if campers are using, you know, the electricity for their air conditioners? Does that...
It's usually not been an issue. It was, um, the, uh, we, I mean, granted, you have a month where you have one or two down there and you, you look at the numbers a little bit, but in most cases, the last couple of years have been our best years in the campgrounds. In fact, last year, uh, I think it was $11,000, $12,000 was what we made on the campground and maybe that's the number for this year. I mean, we've had two very good years in the campgrounds.
$11,000 or $12,000.
Yeah. $12,000.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought it was $11,000 or $12,000.
Sorry. What were the days? I mean, was there any... It was April 1st.
Offseason.
Offseason was October 1st to April 1st.
That was the same week?
It was. I think we moved it from April 1st to April 15th was the, was the only change in dates. And that was to be careful to cover in the first period of April. Why, this wasn't a good example. All other Aprils prior to this had been a good example of why we wouldn't have wanted to provide services to them during that period of time. It provides you the opportunity, you have the option of providing services, which is not guaranteed to any customer who would provide services during that period of time.
Okay, so what is that?
I think that's a good idea because with Highway 20, even though they're getting a bonus of $750,000, finish it early. You know, that's just the bonus. That's not, four million isn't a bonus.
Are you ready to...
I make a motion to approve this new resolution for the campground.
I'll second it. Motion has been made and seconded to approve a resolution setting campground fees for Riverside Park for 2012 season. Sandra, would you call for a vote?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Working here.
Thank you. Item four H, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2012-228 entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of SAC City, Iowa by Adding a New Section for Commercial and Industrial Nonconformance Mitigation under Chapter 145 Dangerous Buildings. Would someone care to introduce it?
I'll excuse it. I'll make the...
Go ahead.
Make the motion now.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, the ordinance has been introduced and has been first and second. Is there any discussion at all? If not, I call for a vote.
I guess my only comment was that I still think that $15,000 is too high.
Sandra, would you call for a vote?
Councilperson Brinney?
Yes.
Proheart?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Brinney?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. Four I is consideration of forgiving Bill Nattis Sewer Bill.
Um, in light of some information that came up today, uh, as we investigated this issue, it brought to our attention on Friday, uh, I would ask that the council consider tabling this till the next, make a motion to table this till the next council meeting. With Mr. Nattis not being here tonight and the new information we have, we need to do a little bit more research of this, on this issue entirely before you move on.
Make motion to table? Second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to table... Motion has been made and seconded to table the Bill Natras Sewer Bill. Sandra, would you call for a vote?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Euster?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Bruni? Yes. Prother?
Yes.
4J is committee and department head reports. Are there any?
I think Harvard reports fairly nice.
Well, the park, we've already had kind of the committee reports on the park because we know what they discussed. If there aren't any, then we'll move on to 5, which is the council forum. And, go ahead.
On your table, you saw something called a legislative link that I didn't get in your packet before we sent them out. This is just the update I received from the League of Cities. Usually it's weekly, just giving us an update on where some of the bigger issues pertaining to city government, what they're talking about, how they might affect different government entities. So I put this in here. If you have any questions, let me know. I can always get more information on them. Do you have any questions for me now? I can tell you right now that as far as the property tax rollback discussion goes, we're being told there's a lot of discussions going on at the legislature between the governor's office and the two bodies, but they're being pretty tight-lipped about what type of negotiations is going on. I know that's one of the highest priority items right now. As far as the changes to the open meetings, open records laws, there's talk of creating a governing body and taking it out of the omnibusman's office, which is just more of a procedural manner. And then there's the small city oversight, which doesn't pertain to cities over 2,000 in population. Right now in the state of Iowa, any city under 700 people in population is, does not have any audit requirements. So it's really targeting cities of 700 and below that need to have an audit every once in a while. But if you have any questions about any of these others, just please let me know and I'll be happy to get more information on it.
Sue Payton and I were on this committee for the paint grant that we received and we now have some flyers ready to put up, so if anybody has a place they would like to put a flyer up. The applications are available at the city hall and at the extension office and they are due back in May 14th. Dale's been really good at the newspaper to print our information as well. I knew of a couple of people that had asked me about, so I hand-delivered a couple of applications today. What we're really, really hoping is that we'll get some matching funds. Twenty gallons of paint doesn't go, I mean, we're grateful and really happy to have it, but there's a lot of work to be done and we're hoping that we'll get some matching funds and some matching paint to do more work than that this summer. And the Citizens in Action Committee is actually going to work in coordination with this group to help apply the paint where needed. So it's, we're all working together to make Sac City more beautiful.
I wanted to notify the council that I, and I told some of you individually that I will likely not be in attendance at the council meeting on May 29th. I may be available via phone that night, but I will not be here that evening. So I just wanted to give you a roll ahead so that I had talked to you already.
I guess I have one question here for you, Adam, that's, does the computer system have anything to do with that?
Actually, I'll have that on the agenda. I got a little caught up last week and didn't get it ready, but I'll have that on the agenda here at the first meeting tonight. So we can talk about that a little bit.
I've had several people stop me and thank me for what we have, the work we have down in the alleys. Some of the big pools have been filled and so on and so forth.
Do we, the city?
Not yours? No. Okay. Well, some of them have been.
Do we, the city, are your committees looking for help to write by or what do we?
If you'd like, I'm sure we'd be happy to talk at the next council meeting and give you guys an update on what's going on from that perspective. There are 11 committees that were created. Dale and I right now are co-chairs organizing it, but we both live busy lives. So the way it was developed is we developed 11 committees with the idea of that those committees, you ask the community to get involved and you let those who choose to be on the committees make the decisions for the most part. Right now, they're working through the budget and setting up their vendor fees and they, I know I've been contacted by a couple of out companies right now from outside of our area that are interested in coming in possibly being vendors during the event. And I think most of the committees, porta potties, things of that nature, trash cans have been arranged. It's, right now, we were just trying to get everything together for entertainment purposes and I don't know, I'm not as familiar with what's going on with the entertainment side and all that, but we can give you a better update.
Well, I was just curious if there was an area that, you know, we were looking for help for the community or?
You want to talk to me?
I'm on that committee and we have had a meeting and there's a lot of things in the works and we've got another meeting scheduled and there's a lot of great ideas and we do have some entertainment already lined up, so things are moving along.
How are the volunteers then coming forward? Is that, you know, there's quite a few committees and?
Some committees have a pretty good amount of people and by pretty good, I'd say, some of them have six to eight or nine people on them. Other committees are, have two or three and in some cases, that's just fine. That's all that committee really needs. There's a couple of committees that could use a little bit more attention, that they could use some help as far as putting their things together. But, you know, the, you look at committees like the events committee and the hospitality committee, they have a lot of work to do, so it takes a lot more volunteers and a lot more people involved in those committees to make them work than say, you know, the sanitation committee, which, you know, for the most part, you got to worry about getting rolls of toilet paper and the porta potties and keeping trash cans and, you know, it's.
Well, I was just curious if there was a need for something that, you know, whether we?
There may be a need for a tractor.
You know, something out here at the city council meeting that so people.
There may be a need for some tractors, depending on how we decide we want to park bikes downtown, but.
Put a cable between a couple of tractors so we can put the bikes over the cable.
It seems to be a common practice in that community.
That's what they really suggest we do. There was really no other suggestion than that because of the volume of bicycles.
And if they don't, they say if you don't have a parking plan, that you, that, they showed us some pictures of examples.
It's a bit exact, if you don't.
So have the service clubs like Kiwanis been approached for volunteers?
Most of them have been approached from a vendor standpoint and asked, and we figure most of them are kind of focused on that type of activity right now, deciding if they want to have a booth or not. One of the approaches I find I'm using is whichever one decides not to do booths, that's the ones who will attack the volunteers. But, but I do know that they're, the Lions Club is looking at a booth and a couple of, I know the Masonic Lodge is toying around with it and you're volunteering to do one for Kiwanis, right, Larry?
Lions Club is going through a booth.
Wow.
Well, they should if they would get the site, but you know, they got to get the sites.
So there's, so there's a lot, a lot of, you're hearing some that seem to be moving forward, but I just had a contact today with Randy down at the church, just a block south, and he told me he did not think they would be doing anything, but the Methodist Church showed me today they thought they would be doing something. So I think everybody's trying, starting to get an idea whether they're going to do something or not.
They're talking about going together, the churches, but I do know that the Methodist Church has a big concern about restaurants. They have very small restaurants and if all the people come there to eat, would it be possible to have porta potties by the Methodist Church so we could tell them that they didn't have to worry about that? Because I really believe we need them to do some food.
Well, one of the theories that's going on is, is that the entities that are paying for the vendor fees are the ones paying for the porta potties. And we want to make sure that they get the advantage of the porta potties. That's somewhat of the theory we've been going with at this point.
Well, I guess my, the only reason I brought any of this up is that if there's a clearing house that, okay, hey, somebody wants to volunteer, who do you contact? You know, now, I know you two.
Adam or Dale.
But, you know, just so the people in the community know that, you know, you two are in charge of it, you know.
Right.
Put his name down.
Yeah. We'll be, we'll be happy to find your home if you want to call here.
What? Can we put your name down? Yeah, okay. I said I was.
Yeah.
We got one load of trash cans, eh?
Is there anything else?
I move to the current, sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Sandra, would you call for a vote?
Councilperson Bruni?
Yes.
Bruni?
Yes.
Proheart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ester?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
No, I wanted to go a longer.